I saw him at the Chivers Institute in Richmond.
Well, I wonder if things go. Going like the last couple days.
Well, I figure.
Yeah, I don't know.
The time has arrived for us to begin our meeting.
Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by. You'll be joined in shortly.
Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence, after which we will have our pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to ask board members, do we have any conflict of interest disclosures? Anyone? Okay, thank you. If not, we will begin our public participation. Public participation is an opportunity for U.S. citizens to give input on relevant issues, not the subject of a public hearing, and it's not intended as a question and answer period. Mr. Stanley, would you name individuals?
Madam Chair, we have two speakers that are scheduled. The first is Robert and Janet Lovelace.
It'll be remote.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Lovelace, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here.
You may begin.
I can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I appreciate this, and I had a couple of questions regarding Robert Love's one-year report on the Hampton-Sidney shooting range. The first question I had was, during his review, did he note the number of participants? And number two, did he report the length of the practice? And number three, is there any kind of log showing either of these for each session? I didn't find that in the report, so I was just curious to have answers to those three questions.
Mr. Love, I'm sorry, Mr. Lovelace, that aspect is coming up. Mr. Love, would you like to report on that now, or would you like to wait until we talk about that?
That's up to you, Madam Chair. I can do it now.
Okay, go ahead and do it now. Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, as part of the special use permit that was issued to Hampton-Sidney Shooting Range, there was a condition recommended by the planning commission that you imposed that there be a one-year review of the operation. I coordinated with Hampton-Sidney staff, and myself and Trey Powell went out to observe the shooting that they had on March 29th. There were six students there in the 90-minute exercise that we went to. There were two 90-minute sessions scheduled for that day. We only observed one of those sessions. But the way it was conducted, Mr. Charles Horton is the safety range officer. He would give a classroom lesson to the students on techniques and procedures, and then they would go to a station and then shoot the sporting clays one at a time. So again, at that particular time, it was six students for that exercise, and that was scheduled to last about 90 minutes. I took decibel readings right there, as close as they would let us get. We had ear and eye protection. The upper 70s was the loudest that it registered. When I went back to the gate of the property, which is still a good distance off the highway, it was much lowered. It was at 45 to 52 decibels. And then out at Route 15, and Mr. Powell went to Washington Baptist Church, the shot was inaudible. We did hear a percussion, like you would know that a shot had been fired, but it didn't register. The normal traffic of Highway 15, both cars and transfers, registered in the upper 60s to mid 70s of vehicle traffic, just engines and tires coming by. So that was observed. To answer a question, I think that the caller was getting at, as part of the conditions, there was no imposed maximum number of students that could be there at one time. You did specify that only Hampton-Sidney professors or safety range officers and students enrolled in the program on the team could participate, and that is what I observed. There were no one else other than the students that were actually shooting. And Mr. Horton himself didn't even shoot. It was just the students. What I found, they had graded the roadway in and put an ample amount of gravel. It was draining very well, so that the muddy condition that used to be there was removed. When you come into the property, close to the road, they've got two, no trespassing signs on two trees. Once you get to the gate, they have another sign, no trespassing. Then they have a notation at a tree before you get to the shooting range that is Hampton-Sidney property, no trespassing and no shooting and no hunting. What these are, they're stations about the size of this podium, out of two-by-fours with the stand. And then there's an apparatus that shoots the clays. I actually have photos. I didn't print my one copy, but I'll pass these around if y'all want to look at them. It's a very simple, very simple operation. They keep everything in a Wilks shed kind of apparatus. Keep everything under lock and key. I did note the shot. It was birdshot, and it was shotgun shells, just like the conditions specified. And I went into the little equipment shed and inspected all of the ammunition that was in there. So by error estimation and error review, they were in full accord and in compliance with the conditions that were imposed by you all a year ago.
Based on what you observed?
That is correct, based on what I observed during that time, yes.
Mr. Lovelace, you heard the report. Are there any other questions or concerns?
First of all, Mr. Love, thank you very much. You answered my first two questions. The reason I asked them is because the day we were there, which was some time ago, last year, we noticed close to 20 participants, and in their original application, they had 6 to 12, which is what you found the day you observed. As I say, we call about 20, and I was just wondering what the average number was and if that was impacting the length of the practice session. So I was just curious also to know if they maintained any type of log which would allow you to review that, you know, the number of participants and the length of the session.
I am not aware of a log, but I can certainly ask Hampton-Sidney that question.
Okay.
And I think a representative actually is here tonight that may can answer that for us, if you so choose.
Is the representative out in the audience now?
He's actually our next speaker, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Lovelace.
Our second speaker tonight for public presentation is Mr. Scott Smolinski from Hampton-Sidney. Scott, are you online?
Are you online, sir? Is it? Okay, he's right there.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Sir, you may speak. Thank you.
Sorry, I was in the other room, but there's some questions in regards to the shooting range?
One of the questions.
Sure, yeah, you bet.
One of the questions was, is a log kept of the number of participants who are actually there?
There is, yeah. There's a log kept. There's only 10 students total that have been shooting there on the team this year, so that the number of students hasn't changed. They usually go a little lower in some cases, depending on commitments, but there's a log for who will be out there. It's been the same group of students who are on the shooting team for this year, who've been out there so far this semester. So twice a week, two hours per session, around probably about an hour of shooting, actual shooting, and about half-hour prep, half-hour cleanup afterwards.
What date did it actually start last year? Do you remember specifically?
I want to say we started in, it was in September. I can't exactly remember the exact date. I do remember sometime in the early fall when we started. Yes.
Any other information you would like to present?
Not unless anybody has any questions or the Lovelaces have any questions pertaining to the course itself.
No, I appreciated y'all adjusting those shooting stands to fire into the property. I missed one number on the phone. What was the average number of students at each session?
Between nine and 10.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
As I say, I read Mr. Love's report, and I just didn't see that. I was just curious. You've answered all my questions. Thank you very much.
You are so welcome. Any others? Well, thank you much, sir.
Sure.
Is that it? Next, we will have comments from the board of supervisors. Ms. Patty?
I'd just like to say good evening. Glad to see everyone here, and thank you for participating in your counters, decisions being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are happy that you are here, and we hope questions are answered. We appreciate your participation. Lou?
Glad to see everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming.
Beverly?
I too want to say welcome and thank you for coming. It's so nice to see faces out there again. Thank you.
Jen?
I'd like to just welcome everybody, and I'm glad there's so many people, it turns out, to express their opinion.
Bobby?
I really don't have any comment. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thanks for being here.
Same way. Thank you all for being here. This is your time, and we appreciate you coming and participating in it.
Thank you so much. Next, we will look at our consent agenda. Are there any concerns, changes, comments?
I'd like to move approval if there's no other comments.
Second.
Okay, this is my motion and second for the approval. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion's been approved. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, we are so delighted to have the president of Longwood University, Mr. W. Taylor Reevely IV. You may come forth.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And it is such a delight to be here, and like y'all said, it's a delight to look out and see faces. It's been a wild little stretch of time, and, you know, in that regard, I very much want to say thank you to you all. And a special thank you to Doug, who started in the midst of this wild time. I really do feel like, in the way that stresses in life sometimes do, that this has knit us all together better, I mean, here in the community. Longwood, Hampton-Sidney, Prince Edward, Farmville, I think we're all coming through this stronger and that much more focused on and honestly delighting in how much we've been depending on each other, you know, in some ways through all these many years, but these past couple especially. And in that way also, I think the way basketball struck such a great chord with everybody, you know, we all needed a joyful note to focus on, and it really provided that. And it's just been, that has been a really special thing that I think we can look forward to as a community to go on through years to come. Part of that, if you all have been walking around on campus recently, but the new convocation center, which has been a dream for the community and for Longwood for sure, for a long time, is really beginning to come to fruition. If you do get a chance to walk by campus, and have it recently, the steel structure is beginning to really come out of the earth, and you can get a sense of the scale of it, the way it's going to be quite big, but also still intimate. You know, so it'll seat for a basketball game around a little bit more than 3,000 people, a figure that we kind of picked really deliberately. It could have built one that was bigger, but having a somewhat tighter crowd that's really going wild at the games is a great thing. And then, when it's set up for concerts, it can seat about 4,500. And I think that's the type of thing that can begin to be a real draw into the community. And one thing, as the world and we all kind of fitfully begin to wake up from COVID, that for sure has been nice, is to see more of that kind of activity, both around the community, but also on campus. And one thing that some of you all got to come to, I know Doug in particular did, was the Great Rural Summit that we hosted on campus back in November. Folks from all across the state, and, you know, around the holidays, everything here looks so great, and everything showed off so well, including campus. And people got a sense of the momentum that's here, and that was very special to me. It was also great just to hear people across a whole range of views and ideas talk about the opportunities, the challenges. and challenges that communities like ours do have, you know, and the opportunities and the challenges are real. But I think we are working through them all together pretty well. And, you know, in that same vein, just on campus, so many of sort of the ordinary-type events that we all expect and look forward to are really beginning to spring back to life again. So graduation this year, for the first time in two years, will be truly normal, and there'll be that boost to people coming into the, for hotel stays and restaurant meals, which will be great. That is the weekend of May 20th and 21st. And then over the course of the summer, we've got a more regular slate of the kinds of conferences and events that would be true in a, you know, in a more typical year, including great things like Girl State, which is something that people do really look forward to and cherish. So it's a nice time to see so many things beginning to go the right way. And that very much includes getting to be able to stand right here, look out, and see you all. And I am honored to be here. And I don't know if there's time for it, but would be certainly delighted to see if there are questions or thoughts anybody might have, too. Madam Chair.
Congratulations, by the way, on the national designation for the Moen Museum.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that's a really significant step for the Moen Museum. You all may have seen that just passed by Congress a couple days ago, kind of an alliance with the federal park system, which is a really great thing.
It's a real honor.
Mr. Reeveley, in terms of upcoming enrollment, do you have an idea at this point what it might be?
We have been, so higher education, as you all likely have been reading some in the news, is facing plenty of headwinds on that front. We've been comparatively lucky. So we've seen our undergraduate enrollment be a little soft during COVID, while our graduate enrollment, and a lot of that is online, but our graduate enrollment has grown a significant amount, which has meant that our overall, our total enrollment is actually up a little bit since right before COVID, when so many places have had a tougher run of things and been down a little bit. What we're hoping is that our, I mean, having college students on campus is the heart of what makes Longwood great. And so we're hoping that that's going to begin to really move in the right direction. And we're in the middle of, and if you all that have family or friends that are at that age where you would know, we're right in the middle of the college admissions season right now, and that's looking pretty promising. You know, part of the charm of everything here is people getting to physically set foot and walk around and see the beauty. During COVID, we couldn't do that nearly as much, but we were able to now again. And so we're hopeful in that regard. So specific number or range, our enrollment right now is around 4,600, 4,700, and I bet it'll be about that again this coming year.
Any other board members with questions? Anybody from the audience? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. What plans do you have for expanding your curriculum, for expanding the number of schools that you offer to entice more students to apply along with it?
That is the great question. If anybody has the pitch-perfect answer to that, all of higher ed is really looking for it. That said, there are a variety of things that we really are working on. So our nursing program, very, very popular. That's a very, there are a lot of logistical complications associated with it. You've got to be able to place student nurses to a clinical setting. For instance, you've got to have the right classroom space for it. So it's a little tough to grow that one easily, but we've been working on growing that one. Our business majors are, that's also very popular, so we've been working on enhancing that one. The world dearly needs teachers these days. It's been more of a challenge to get 17-year-olds and 18-year-olds to want to go into that profession, but we're really concentrating on that, too. And then a novel idea that we kick around from time to time, that's kind of close to my own heart, is there an increasing number of places around the country that know that the skilled trades, carpentry, masonry, plaster work, ironwork, really do take a lot of apprenticeship and the old ways of doing it to get to a point where you can really do them well. And there's some places that are beginning to weave that into the college curriculum. And that's the type of thing that, it's not the snap of the fingers to make that type of thing happen. But I think, you know, long down the road, that's something that could be really appealing, too.
President Reeveley, while we have you here this evening, and Mr. Pope, we have an item on our agenda that involves Longwood. If I could have Sarah puck it. If Sarah could come up, we'd go ahead and address this issue. Madam Chair, if that's all right?
Yes.
One of the things that you may not know about the curriculum there is Carnegie Mellon is one of the better cybersecurity schools in the country. And in the summertime, they have an intern program, and they get four to 500 applicants. And they accept, I think, maybe 2025, something like that. It's very difficult to get into, and they get applicants from Harvard and some of the technical schools like MIT and so forth. A few years ago, there was only one school in the country that had multiple applicants accepted, Longwood. That's awfully tough to do, and they did it two years in a row. And hopefully, we'll get a data center, and that will help even more so.
So, Madam Chair and members of the board, if you will turn to your table pack, there is an agenda item number 24, which is an event permit. And we received this yesterday afternoon. So we've spent a little bit of time the last day coordinating with all of our partners, I'm going to say, to try and find a path through this. So Alpha Sigma Phi Fraternity, and I believe we have two representatives here this evening at Longwood University, have filed a permit application, an event permit application with the county for a pig roast event scheduled for Saturday, April 30, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The event location is private property at a 911 address of 873 Vaughan Road in Prospect. And I distributed a map. For those of you who are not familiar, Vaughan Road is an unpaved road off of Olive Branch Road, off of Hickburg Road, off of US 460, near Elum. And that map will show you the location and the property. So attached for the board's consideration are a copy of the event permit application, an event and logistics brief of the event that was prepared, I believe, by the fraternity and provided to the county by Longwood University, and a copy of the county festival ordinance. So since receiving the application, I've reached out to the sheriff, the Volunteer Rescue Squad, Virginia ABC, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Health, the Prospect Volunteer Fire Department, and the Virginia State Police. I've also had a conversation with the county's liability insurance carrier, VACORP, about county risk management for the issuance of a permit for an event such as this. And then earlier today, I had a conversation with Dustin Hall, one of the advisors for the fraternity, who I believe is with the Longwood Interfraternity Council, employee of Longwood University. And then Nicholas, who's Nicholas? Nicholas? Who's Nicholas? I see two hands, so somebody's Nicholas.
To verify, Dustin Hall, you worked for Longwood for their alumni youth council and for our community, or the Interfraternity Council. So he isn't like by any ways, like his day-to-day job isn't associated with us. He's more or less like a provider, if that makes sense.
Okay. But he's an employee of Longwood?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So there are a number of items to review for the boards, because the way this ordinance is currently written is that this is a permit that the Board of Supervisors would have to actually either approve or authorize the issuance of the way the ordinance is written right now. So I'd like to run through these issues quickly, and then we can answer questions, and we have the representatives of the fraternity. So it is my understanding that the event has been scaled back from 700 to 500. Is that correct? Okay. Which replaced the estimated number of participants now at 550 versus the 700 and 750 that are on your application. And the difference is that the members of the fraternity do not purchase tickets. So the 50 individuals are fraternity members, and everybody else, I was going to say, is probably largely from the Longwood University community. Sanitation, the Virginia Department of Health regulations require one portage on per 100 people, and they recommend one handwashing station per five portages. I think I say that there's an email and attachment, but it's not in there. But I have an email and an attachment from Paul Freed that says that. The fraternity indicates that its members will clean the property and the surrounding area after the event and the following day. The food and water, the catering to be provided by the Fish and Pig in Bojangles is not yet confirmed?
No, but actively working on it.
Okay. The medical, the plan for the adequate medical facilities required by the ordinance is inadequate as outlined in the application, but I spoke with the Executive Director of the Prince Edward Volunteer Rescue Squad this morning. She has the ability to contract with the fraternity for an on-scene standby unit from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at a cost of $450, which would be a cost that the fraternity would have to assume. Staff recommends to the board, as a condition of the permit, that this be required, because peavers will have two staffed crews in Prince Edward County that day. But if either or both of those are busy at the time of a call on Vaughan Road, you know, at minimum, it would take 20 to 25 minutes. And if we had to pull a squad from Maheron, could take 35 to 40 minutes to get a response. So we would, staff would strongly encourage the board to require the on-scene standby unit at the site. Parking, all parking must be on private property. I have not seen a map. It cannot be along Vaughan Road, and I understand in years past that maybe there was a lot of parking along the road, which was problematic for the residents. But VDOT has noted, and as required by Section 462129 of the Code of Virginia, basically, you can't park in the state right away. I think we all know that. And Vaughan Road is already a fairly narrow gravel road, so we need to make sure that all of the parking gets pushed into the private property. The security and safety, the event and logistics brief that's provided by the fraternity indicates that they will hire two private security officers for event management and crowd enforcement. And again, staff recommends this to the board as a permit condition, and I believe you all are working on that also. Is that correct? Okay. The presence of alcohol, I have spoken to our local ABC officer. No ABC permit is required as the event is on private property. Please note the paragraph in the event and logistics brief concerning alcohol. So I think underage possession by consumption and driving under the influence are two of the most significant risk factors, and I'm going to say, in our mind, of the event. There is concern about speed and driver impairment and a history of motor vehicle accidents on the secondary roads, Hickburg and Olive Branch, and US 460 related to this event. I spoke to the fire chief last night, who would have responded to those motor vehicle accidents. The fraternity has hired three designated drivers for the crowd at large. And then it is my understanding that each participating Greek organization will have designated drivers for their individual members. So I would say that that would help mitigate some of our risk. I also spoke with the Virginia State Police Sergeant this afternoon, and they have noted the date of the event and plan to, in his words, saturate the area with directed patrols, and will work closely with the county and local law enforcement to help ensure the safety of both the participants and the public during this event. Noise, there is no band, but music will be played by personal vehicles and speakers. And I reminded Mr. Hall this morning that the county does have a noise ordinance which states that music should not be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from its source. Neighbors, the closest neighbor is approximately 900 to 1,000 feet from the estimated, I'm going to say, estimated location. It's a 28-acre parcel, and I don't know specifically where the participants and the music will be, but it's 900 to 1,000 feet, my best guesstimate, from the, I'm going to say, the likely location to the next closest residential structure. In total, there are six 911 addresses on Vaughan Road, including the one at which the event will be held. So there are five other residents on that road. University involvement, it is noted again in the event and logistics brief that the Office of Fraternity and Sorority Life, the Vice President for Student Affairs, and the Longwood University Chief of Police are all aware of the date, location, and the details of the event. And then last, the right of entry, the county ordinance states that no permit shall be issued under this article unless the applicant, and in this case, I think we would require, or we would ask the board to require, that the owner of the property shall furnish to the board written permission for the board, its lawful agents, and duly constituted law enforcement officers to go upon the property at any reasonable time for the purpose of determining compliance. And then the board would have the right to revoke the permit, et cetera. So attached are the permit application as it was provided to the county, the event and logistics brief that was written by the fraternity, and then the county ordinance. And we have given the board three sample motions for your consideration, the first being perhaps the ability to approve the permit with these conditions in place. Just to circle back on one issue, when I did speak with VACORP about the county's risk management, they said, as long as we were not guilty of gross negligence and did our due diligence to try and ensure the safety of the participants and the public, that, you know, while the county can still be sued if something happened, you know, somebody would have to prove gross negligence. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and maybe these gentlemen here have additional information that I'm not aware of.
I would like to ask, why was this particular location chosen?
Historically, we've had this location in the past.
Okay, so you've been here before?
Yes, ma'am. It's been many, many years, which is, I think, where we've built up a reputation. Unfortunately, it's not been built. Unfortunately, it's not been a favorable one for us, and to be honestly frank, we probably deserve. That being said, that was many years ago, and we are trying to improve. Mainly with issues, I think, with some parking. That is why we've decided to tone this event down. Previous years, I believe, we've almost had 2,000 participants there, which explains why there is such an issue with the parking. With the 550, that's a quarter of these last papers that we've had, which was in 2019, I believe. And this field should be more than big enough to be able to fit basically what we need, if that makes sense.
So...
Did I answer your question, Alan?
The last time you had it there, do you, do you remember any particular problems that you had concern about that didn't go well, as well as you thought they could have or should have?
The only one that we actually were made aware of was the issue with apparently parking. That was also three years ago, too, so my memory is a little audio on it. But at first, I was told we never had any incidences of anything really past that, mainly just parking on the side of the road, which obviously is an issue, and we're trying to make arrangements for that and not have that deep problem whatsoever.
And David, I direct this question to you, because that's your particular area, right?
It is.
Can you think of any concerns?
Trash, trash was the biggest problem. It was three years ago. They've had this piece of property, I think 17 years is actually when they started this, that piece of property. The last, the last year was a tremendous amount of trash left, and that was, that's, Jim Cox, I'm sure, you know who I'm talking about, she and I, she's the one who called me and asked me about it, and that's where this porch came from. If you all can alleviate the parking issue and the trash, which I think you have in here that you all picked it up that day and the next day also.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are really committed to trying to do this to proper and official way, and, I mean, we're being very, very lax with that, sir.
That was, that was too many issues.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Sure.
For you, sir, and the president, if it's 550 people, wouldn't it be better on campus where you have got police on campus, you have rescue close by? Is it any reason not to have it there at Longwood?
Yes, sir. Part of the issue with Longwood is you would have to go through a bar mark, including catering. It's basically a long list contracted to any posted on-campus event. You have to go through that particular company. It's very expensive. And frankly, not too many Longwood campuses, locations on campus, but those where we could be able to have music playing too, and truthfully not deserve anyone, too, which is why we also prefer this location.
I have one more.
Sure.
For Sarah and you both. It's not many people that are not here that know about the Darlington Heights Fire Department fundraiser. At times, we were 4,000 to 4,500 people at our fundraisers. And we never sold, provided alcohol, period. ABC came in because of people bringing it in. And it ruined our fundraiser, because they didn't want anybody there with it, they didn't want young individuals, underage around it. I really have a concern that the ABC board, something's not right here pertaining to what happened to our fire department. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Gilliam, all I can tell you is that the information that is before you was provided to ABC Law Enforcement, and I spoke with him this morning, and he indicated that a permit was not required. And, you know, I, that's all I...
I would have a conversation with Chief Tindley, because we're private property.
Yeah.
And she was really addressed hard.
Right.
Thank you.
I got a question. Security officers, who are they? Are they deputies, deputies, police, who are they?
The security officers that we're trying to go through is the, or... Oh, answer my question. So I know the private security company on the phone, and they told me for what service we're looking to provide, they recommended that we go through local bars or bouncers, because they have the press certifications to give us, bag checking, making sure everybody's okay, and also taking people out if they get too rowdy. So we are currently looking for those right now. The main participants are the people, or bouncers that work at press clubs that are well experienced and honestly been dealing with the same, I guess, college students, Longwood students, even we know, and successfully paying that.
Is it being a candidate affect the sheriff? If someone had got put out under the influence, these bouncers, they put them out, where'd it go?
Likely that the 550 people that are allowed as participants that we're shooting for, which were either all in pre-fight, if not all, or are present people arriving into pre-fight. Pre-fight at Longwood, in recent years, thankfully, has restricted some of our previous freedoms, and honestly, for the safety of students. All of pre-fight has to follow certain rules, and look at a fact like this, I can almost guarantee that every security informant invited, will be invited to use. That will be part of getting them out of there. And that means that we also have three on standby, too, so if a bouncer does remove someone, they're not going to take the four first and that one to decide the road. Well, it'll be constructive enough that that person will get home safely, in my any circumstances.
That's, that's all I mean. I want to make sure people remain safe.
Any other concerns, questions? Okay. You know what? Okay, so members of the board, how do we want to vote on this to the motion to approve and disprove?
I move to admit the application, continued upon the evidence being provided to, to the satisfaction of the county administrator and the county attorney of the following conditions listed A through I. Move that it be approved. Board approve it.
Second. Okay. Motion has been made in second. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
No.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
I'm going to stay, because this is in my area.
Okay. And I said yes.
Bow out, wasn't it?
Yes. Okay. So it is moved. Thank you much.
Keep them safe, keep them safe. I'll call them myself.
But again, I want to reiterate, to make sure the guidelines A through I are met.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
If I may, who would we report these, this progress to?
Sarah.
Does it make sense?
Okay. Thank you so much.
And thank you, President Reeveley, for being here and staying.
Thank you.
Yes, and I was going to do that, too. Thank you so much.
Jerry, you go enjoy it. Now, let me come see me. He's going to get a bounty. I hope not. Give him a few chases.
Okay, the time has arrived, right, for our public hearing. We are a little bit past that. So we will begin our public hearing. Mr. Love, I will turn that over to you. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, our public hearing tonight is to consider an amendment to the subdivision ordinance as it pertains to large acreage tracts for agricultural use. Currently, the Prince Edward County subdivision ordinance does not have an exemption for large tracts that are in agricultural production that are subdivided. Currently, our ordinance states that any new tract of land that's surveyed off of a larger tract be perked and approved by the Health Department and Virginia Department of Transportation. Now, the purpose of this, the way it's written in the ordinance, is not to cite a home, but to certify that the soil is suitable for a well-inseptic, and what type? Some land in the county, you have to have a very expensive alternate system, they're $20,000, $30,000 with the annual maintenance of a couple thousand dollars a year, whereas other, the traditional systems are more economical in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. So the purpose, when we, when we look at a new subdivided lot, and that's what this is about, a, taking a smaller piece of a larger piece of land and creating a new tract of land that doesn't exist, we check to make sure that it has legal ingress and egress to a state highway, that it is perkable, and that the lot itself is, meets the minimum lot size standards, and geometry, the shape of the lot, meets our standards. So those are the things we check for now. Last year, back in the fall, we had, I had a subdivision of a lot. It was a 100-acre standalone lot, it was a brand-new tract of land coming off of 192 acres. It wasn't dissolved into a neighboring tract, it was to be a standalone, and I required it to be perked. After that, the landowner had a heartache, of course, over that added expense to that deal, and you recommended that this go to the Planning Commission for study. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in February, I think, yes? And then with an advertisement of 50 acres for the minimum threshold, and then after taking public comments, they held another hearing in March, reducing that minimum threshold to 25 acres. Now, what this means is if someone were to, if this were to pass, and someone were to come and wanted to create a brand-new lot, if it's 25 acres or more, intended to be in agricultural production, then it would not have to be perked. So that upfront cost doesn't get, is not borne by the seller or the buyer. This, what this doesn't do, if that lot gets sold again and again and again, it, we still don't check it, if someone wants to build a house, they would perk it at that time. Lots of less than 25 acres would still follow our old procedure of having Virginia Department of Transportation and Virginia Health approve the lot. And again, it's been a little bit of misunderstanding, and I've gotten some calls, this is not on the buying and selling of land, it's on the books today. This is if you take a smaller piece of a big piece and create a new lot, which by state law has to be surveyed, you also have to have it perked and check for, we still are going to check, make sure it has legal ingress and egress to a state highway. But this is, would be an exemption, a break in the rules that currently does not exist. And we, we looked at other localities around us, some counties have no exemption, and other counties have an exemption. Charlotte, for instance, has 20, Appomattox has 20, Nottaway has none. So again, this is, this has been properly advertised, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have as it pertains to this. For the purpose of subdivision, anytime you take a single tract of land and break it into two or more pieces, it's the act of subdivision. So this, the subdivision ordinance is not a subdivision by name like the manor, it is the actual action of splitting, splitting a lot, or splitting a tract of land. And currently, all splits get perked, the way it's written now.
All right, based on what we have, we have nine speakers who would like to speak. Because we have nine speakers, I will allot you two and a half minutes to speak.
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Dr. Brad, I believe there may be a couple of names on that list that maybe aren't going to speak, just to...
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, that, that would be fine.
Madam Chair, just before, just before anyone speaks, a question. If, if we decided to okay this, and we decided to lower, it would have to go back before the Planning Commission to another hearing, is that correct?
I think I can answer that, Supervisor Emmert. I think the board wouldn't have to send it back to the Planning Commission, you'd have to re-advertise it. So let's say you wanted to accept what's proposed, but re-advertise a lower or higher number, you could do that without having to go back to the Planning Commission.
That was a question that someone had asked me, if it could be reduced, if this passed, could it be reduced without having to go back before the Planning Commission?
Any other concerns before we bring forth our speakers?
I have a question for Dave. Did you say it's state law that it has to be done?
A survey, not, not perk.
Not perks, the survey.
It's common practice that localities that have well-inseptic locations do perk, and I think it's prevalent, I'm pretty sure that most every county around us has a perk requirement, health, farm, and curves.
I'm just curious, may I see by show of hands who would like to speak? And I can get a number, and may be able to increase that to three minutes, if we have to.
Dr. Brad, let me check and see, we have people in the circuit, so let me just get a quick headcount of speakers.
Okay, thank you.
This conversation, while we're waiting, Madam Chair, if I could...
Sure.
This, this thing is a little confusing to me, and I've tried to think about it in a lot of different ways. If I was to buy 50 acres of land with no intent to offer somebody else's piece of land with no intent of building, I'm on fishing a pond, to take the grandkids hunting, I don't see anything necessary but doing a perk test. Now, if I'm going to buy it from a realtor to build before I get a building permit, I've got to have a perk test. If I buy, then I got to have a perk test and get a building permit and got to have a perk test, that's double. That's $700 and some now to get a perk test, plus getting a check, so that's $1,400. Terry, am I thinking right? You, you, you're the realtor expert here tonight. I, I think it's between the seller and the buyer, all right? If, if I'm going to buy, then I'm going to build a house, yes, I want to do a perk test. I've got a friend in North Carolina that bought 110 acres, and all of a sudden, they got to buy 4,000 foot of pipe to get all the way to the back corner to put the drainage field in. I can see the reason for it. But it's kind of between the seller and the buyer, to me, what they're going to actually do with their land. David may want to put cows on it. Only thing he'd do is cattle waters, no septic system. I'd really like to hear exactly where we're going with this. If it's, if we're doing a perk test to build a home, yes. If we're not, I don't know what we even talking about, to tell you the truth. I need a little help.
I mean, that's what the intent is.
So the ordinance right now says you perk, you provide a perk for any subdivision lot. So what we're trying to do is put an exemption in there, and I think the question, where we send it back to the Planning Commission, is where's the line? What is, what's the size lot? Because you could have a smaller lot that you could create, somebody could buy it down the road, and you might not be able to get a perk. You might get an alternative system, you might not. There's a, a line where you're pretty sure that on a larger lot, you'll be able to eventually get a perk, given the size of the lot. We had a, one of the Planning Commission members spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, he had a 30-acre, he couldn't get a perk site on 30 acres, he was able to get a more expensive alternative system, is an option. But again, that's something that he had to work through. But right now, in order to subdivide, you have to have a perk site. So we're trying to add in an exemption to allow, you know, if you want to buy 50 acres, add it to the farm, it's a separate lot, you don't need, we don't think you should have to perk it. Let's put an exemption in there for that. The question is, what's the size, potentially? That needs to be a minimum size, it needs to be before we allow that.
I think Lou is in the same position I was in, and I didn't realize, Bobby, I'm sure Bill and Plan Commission can explain this better. In the past, there have been a lot of lots sold or subdivided or whatever else that this wasn't required. It didn't mean that they didn't have to, because by our county ordinance, they were supposed to. It was just allowed. Is that, is that the way this is, Bobby? I mean, is that the way you see it?
Yeah, it did get it for us, basically.
But the ordinance that we have now requires it, and even when I read... But the ordinance that we have now requires it, and even when I read this, Pat's going to speak to it in just a minute, when I read this Thursday night at another meeting, we, I was just reading the ordinance because it was handed to me, and I, I couldn't, I couldn't grasp exactly what it was saying. But I've talked to several people since then and realized that we don't have an exemption at all right now, where this would give us an exemption, it's just whether, whether we want a different lot size or whatever else. Or if we want an exemption at all. If we want an exemption, period, something has to be done, it's just going to be up to the board, or the Planning Commission, or whoever to decide the lot size. But I, I'm like you, Lou, when I read it, I read it three or four times, and I couldn't get, I couldn't figure it out, and then I, when I talked to Doug and talked to Robert also, then I realized that we have not enforced what our ordinance is, which I think is what we've talked about 100 times in, in these meetings, that we have some ordinances that, that maybe we don't even understand. So, when, when Jesse, and I'm sure Jesse's going to speak in a minute, when he subdivided his, he was required to, no matter what he was going to. If we had an exemption, he would not have had to have had a perk, because he would have been for forestry or agriculture.
So, we need to do an exemption and acreage?
Yeah. I mean, that's, we're going to hear a speaker in a minute, but I, from what I understand, that's what came out of the Planning Commission, correct, Bobby? Because I, I mean, I, I just didn't realize what, even when I read it, I wasn't clear as to what I was reading, but.
Right, yeah.
Sarah, did you have, how many folks did you have in the other room?
I don't think we had any speakers from the other room, but nobody is in the other room now, we called everybody into the floor.
I mean, is it any specific reason why we picked 25 acres? Why couldn't it be five acres? You know, why not 10 acres? If I bought, if I bought five acres of land, and all I want to do is put cows in, fence it in and put cows in it, I mean, why shouldn't I be able to do it without perking, having it perked?
Well, the way it is right now, we can't because...
I know, because it's the ordinance we have, even though we didn't enforce it.
Right. But I mean, Bobby, I can, I can speak to this, because I was reading the minutes, Bobby made the motion to have it at four or five, and it was not seconded, so therefore it died in committee.
See, I, I think 25, I mean, if I buy five acres, I'd need to do whatever I'm going to do with it, if I don't...
Right now, let's, let's get ready to listen to the speaker.
Me personally.
Okay?
All right.
This is Sammy, Detective.
So, we've got two and a half minutes per speaker. The first speaker is Jesse Yates.
Well, thank you all for having that discussion before I got up here. I definitely appreciate it. You sound exactly like where I want to go, there's no problem with it. But 25 acres, this doesn't make sense why people have to have 25 acres per. If you're going to go to a four or five acre lot, it sounds like you're going to build a house, get a perk test. So, I'm for it all the way. If y'all can come to that agreement, I will be tickled. Thank you all, and thank you for working with me.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mr. Doug Farley.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I thought I understood this concept when I heard about it and what I read about it. After listening to this discussion, I don't think I do understand it. I'm terribly confused. You know, this thing has not been, um, if this, if this ordinance has not been, you know, enforced, why are we going to enforce it now? It seems like never, never, never in my lifetime have I lived through a period such as I've been living through right now. The last two years, Mr. Revell was right, have been very trying. It's stressful, it's been emotional, it's been dreadful. When I look at the Board of Supervisors, I look for leaders that are going to do something positive. I don't see where this ordinance is going to do anything positive. It's going to be more regulation at a time when you need to be compassionate. You're going to impact the people that are already being impacted the most, the people who can least afford to be impacted, those who are trying to get their first piece of land. Not those that are buying 190 acres or 500 acres, but those who are buying maybe two You want to do something positive? Convince the town council to hold the money from the meals tax and send it to the Ukraine for three months, and take your money from the COVID that we've got buckets full of, and replenish our stockpile. I'm confused about this ordinance. I know I only got a couple of minutes, and I'm, I'm about done. But I'm confused about this ordinance. I'll support whatever the Supervisors say, but be very cautious what you do, do something positive. Help the people of Prince Edward, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farley.
Next speaker is Mr. Sam Coleman.
Madam Chairman and the board, I was concerned that the amount of acreage that, of 25 acres, that this would be doing nothing but starting to cut back the size of, of land that we can farm in the county. You know, we don't have many tracts, if you start looking around, that are 25 acres of old, good, open, productive land. And now, we're going to start with having to perk it and so forth? I think that's totally wrong. I would say we need to go back to what we had on the Planning Commission for 25 years that I served on it, of going on the idea of how much we could do per section land. I think it was like four acres at one time that we could, you know, come down with. But we need to, I think 25 is way, way too far to have as a size of lot we would have to split off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Mr. Alan Fokes.
Thank you, board. I just have a few comments I'd like to make. With the other speakers, I think 25 acres is, is too much, way too much as far as farmland, as Mr. Coleman said, there's not many good 25-acre pieces out there. Now, the other question I have, okay, say this goes through as proposed, and the piece of land doesn't perk, where are we at then? I can't buy it, or is that, is, does anybody know?
So, you had to identify an alternative system or something to be able to serve it if it didn't perk?
Okay, all right.
Again, that's what's currently on the books, is either have a standard perk site or identify an alternative system that could serve it. You wouldn't have to build it, just have to identify.
So, you, you have to identify an alternative system? Well, it seems like to me, how I've been doing business in the past, it's between the buyer and the seller to figure that out. Now, I can understand when we get down to a very small building lot, that there may need to be something ordinance, but 25 acres, I feel like is too much, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. James Talton.
All right. Now, I don't own much land, that's true, but I'm going to give it to my son. What are we supposed to do with that?
There's a separate section that deals with family subdivisions, there's some other ways...
This is my son. I got 13 acres. All right, now, when I pass away, it goes to him. Does he have to go through all this?
No, sir. An existing parcel of land stays as a parcel of land, it would not have to go through any other process.
All right. I appreciate y'all listening to me, but y'all need to do some better in here. Y'all need to get it straight before you start, because some of these people get tired of listening to the same thing, same thing. I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Talton.
Next speaker is Ms. Jeanette Talton.
As you can see, my husband is a little bit concerned about this. We don't own 25 acres, and our hopes and plans for what property we do have is not to build on what else we have. Even if we transferred a small portion of it to our son, there's no money involved in it. So, I think part of this must be, again, the size of the property. Most localities require a minimum of two and a half acres to three acres to build on it, and I think that part of this should say, what is the intent of the purchase? If the intent is to build on the property, then I think the person who purchased it is the one who should be responsible for the perk cost. Because if we were to sell any of our property, we're not going to get enough money to make a profit if we have to pay $700 to have it perked before we sell it. Because 13 acres, I mean, we can't divide it down that much. We use, right, much of it for our home, and our small orchard, and our garden spots, and whatever, we wouldn't have that much property to sell. So, I think you should reduce the size of the, the property that, that you're going to put this ordinance on, but I think you need to include a tenth of the buyer. If the buyer's going to build on it, then it needs to be perked. If the buyer is not going to build on it, there's no need to do a perk. If they're going to plant trees on it, hold it for soil conference conservation, or use it for, to cut the hay off of it, whatever, there's no intent to build, there's no need for a perk. So, you've got to consider that. But like my husband says, we intend to transfer our property to our son, whether we pass away or not, we may have to go into a nursing home, or go into aged adult facilities. He shouldn't have to pay anything. We have two wells and two septic tanks on the property already. If we were to get, let him build on a piece of the property, there's an existing well and septic tank there, why would we need to perk it? So, you also need to look at what's on the property that's being sold. If it's already been perked, why do it again? So, there, there's several considerations that you must look at before you just pass a blank ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Talton.
Next speaker is Mr. Patrick Murphy.
Madam Chairperson, members of the board, thank you very much for your time. Speaking in, in reference to this, in, in retrospect to the acreage size, for those of you who know me, I'm a forester by trade and a cattlemen by choice. My son is following in my footsteps to be a third-generation cattle farmer in Prince Edward County. Currently, in the year 2021, according to USDA statistics, Virginia lost 800 farms for a total of 100,000 acres of agricultural production land. I applaud Mr. Jones and Mr. Townsend for their insight and their vision. Speaking of five acres in size, in my line of work, we see a lot of agricultural production, we see a lot of forestry production between 10 and 25 acres. A perk test is not needed to plant trees, a perk test is not needed to water cows. So, I would ask you tonight to reduce the level, I understand it's already on the books, so let's reduce it to something reasonable, down to roughly five acres in size, to minimize the expense of acquisition, because young farmers, as they come up through the ranks, the acquisition of land in the county is going to be very trying for them, it's going to be very costly for them, and in turn, we don't need any more added expense to our future generations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Charles Weaver.
Oh, I, I have no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Next speak, next and last speaker that signed up is Mr. Mark Weaver.
I have no comments, sir.
Okay.
Madam Chair, that's all the individuals we have signed up, maybe some other folks that want to speak.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak, relevant to this?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I, I also would like to second some of the, some of the thoughts.
Excuse me, would you state your name first?
I apologize. Derek Koblenz from Prospect.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, possibly a clarifying question, is the perk test to, is that contingent on you buying the land? Does that happen at the time of purchase?
Happens at the time the lot is created.
I see.
Planted.
And that is irregardless of intentions to build a house on it?
That's correct.
Okay. A suggestion, possibly not feasible, but what if the purchase of the land were completely separate, and then the intention, when you go in to get a building permit, as we all know, needs to happen when you build much of anything these days? When you decide to build a house, that's when all the perk tests happen, that's when you decide whether you need a, a regular septic system or a more enhanced one. That, that could decide whether, whether or how much you could build on that property. But if we continue with the ordinance that we have, it would be in agreement that it should be probably lowered down to maybe five acres or something, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I would, I would just like to mention the fact that, as a reminder, the commission unanimously recommended approval. Added, the current proposed minimum threshold of 25 acres is comfortable, comparable to what is utilized in the surrounding areas. We looked at other counties, and I think the most that I observed might have been 20. So, we, we are, we're pretty comparable in what we're recommending. It would provide immediate relief to owners wanting to subdivide a lot of agricultural purposes without the added expense of perking. Okay, board, it's up to you, what do you...
Madam Chairman, just for clarification, have you officially closed the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
I'm going to move that we reduce this acreage to five instead of 25.
Madam Chair, if we're going to lower it, we'll need to go back and re-advertise it.
That's what I was asking about. The only way that we can do that is if we pass this tonight and then go back, is that correct?
Well, my suggestion...
Without having to go to the Planning Commission.
That's, that's correct. My suggestion would be, even if you don't like the 25 acres, pass it, because right now, it, at least it'll give some relief to someone who comes to the door, and we've had... And we've had some people who have come and talked to Robbie over the last 30, 45 days. Robbie, right?
Yes, we started, since we started with the 50, I had one gentleman, Mr. Charles Woodin, that came through, and he had a 51.18 acre tract and a 50 acre tract coming off of the 200, and he had a perk on both. I will say, his son had a joint property, so he spent over to an existing well and septic. And that's what I did want to state, one of the speakers, if there's an existing well and septic, that meets the Health Department regulation. So we are, in practicality, this is being looked at in all aspects when someone's coming in to create a new one. If there's a well and septic on it, it just gets recertified. We don't go with what's left.
One more question that was brought up. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with whether you can sell the property or buy it, correct?
That's correct.
You can still sell it, whether it perks or not. That was a question that was brought up. It won't have anything to do with the ability to buy or sell.
That's right.
Okay. I'm with you all 100%. I just don't think we can legally do that in here until it's, something's done.
You know, the board simply, you could do one of a couple of things. You could just say, we asked to have a motion of second and a vote to re-advertise the lower acreage. You could approve the current request, but ask that staff re-advertise the lower acreage. You could table it. Of course, tabling does nothing.
Let's say, re-advertise the five acres. Let's do a one-time deal. There ain't going back and forth.
Sounds good. I second that.
Okay, Jared, would you restate your motion?
I move that we re-advertise the acreage reduced from 25 acres to five.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. So motion is seconded, that we reduce to five, Patty?
No.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
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 Odessa? Yes. So we go back and re-advertise for five. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, we need to go back to item nine?
Yes. We'll wait until the room clears, and then we'll start back.
I bet you could have got a second the other night. We'd already have this done.
I don't know. The realtors, I thought they would be for it, but they were against it.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to item nine, Highway Matters. And since Mr. Scott Frederick is in another county for a meeting, sir, we ask you to take any concerns.
Sarah?
Yes, sir.
I noticed today, 460 eastbound, right into county line between Amex and Prince Edward, there's a very deep hole coming in the lane. I think amatics should be notified of that.
You think it's in amatics?
Before you get to the county line.
Any other concerns from board members relevant to Highway Matters?
Chincapin Road, just asking to check that, please, Sarah.
Would he completed the logging on Mount Pleasant, sir? I know Scott noted it last month. Nothing's been done about that yet.
So the logging is completed in the road that?
On Mount Pleasant, between Mount Pleasant Church and Falkland.
Is there a problem, I'm sorry, is there a problem with the law?
Yeah, it's a broken asphalt.
Sir, I have to agree with Supervisor Townsend on that. That road is in bad shape because I travel on it pretty regularly too. Any other concerns?
Between Falkland.
Any others? Okay, if not, we move to item 11, Old Business. Mr. Love. Did he leave?
I'll take that one, Madam Chair. The application for the special use permit for a meat processing facility in the Darlington Heights area has been withdrawn by the applicant. The Industrial Development Authority has made an offer to the applicant for a portion of a parcel that exists in the Prince Edward County Industrial Park, and he is currently moving forward with looking at that location.
Okay, there you go. Some no action needed. Item 12, excuse me.
Just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board for allowing additional time to take a few hours together. If you're so happy with this, it means that this requirement's a whole lot better than very well done.
You're so welcome. Thank you for that comment, sir.
I'd like to thank Mr. Timmons for all the time that he put in and getting this smooth out the way he did. I think that was a quarter job.
I think that was a prime example of a win-win situation. You guys, the community got what they want, and he got what he wants. I know he'll appreciate that.
Mr. Stanley, do you think we need any additional comments on number 12, item 12, the review of the Hampton-Sidney shooting range?
No, ma'am. Unless there are any other questions.
Okay. Item 13, elections ordinance redistricting. Sarah?
This seems to be the endless, endless redistricting. So this seems to be the endless redistricting process. So our registrar is here again this evening. So at its February 8th meeting, the board approved the schedule for the county's redistricting. And at this point, we are at the April 12th meeting, where the board can finally take action on the amendments to the election ordinance and the redistricting plan. With that said, I would, with the chair's permission, just like to put a little bit of information into the minutes for the record, just in case we have any questions arise about the process.
Please do.
So as the board is aware, the proposed redistricting plan that has been recommended and advertised was the one that was developed by our Citizen Advisory Committee for Redistricting, Ben Goodow from the Democratic Party, Liz Garrison from the Republican Party, and Cam Patterson from the NAACP, who chaired the committee. The board charged the Citizen Advisory Committee with creating a draft redistricting plan for the county that was guided by the adherence to the legal requirements of redistricting and also the directives outlined by the Board of Supervisors. The legal requirements are equal population, compactness and contiguity, clearly defined and observable boundaries, the equal protection clause, and then the board's directives were maintaining the eight districts, consideration for communities of interest, consideration for existing voting precinct boundaries, and incumbent representation, and consideration of the existing geographical and political boundaries. There were also two very significant actions by the Virginia General Assembly that especially, one of them especially impacted Prince Edward County. The incarcerated population that y'all are familiar with created a loss of 122 people from our population to our redistricting count, most likely the result of the reallocation of the Piedmont Regional Jail population. But more importantly was the split precinct statute that the General Assembly put in. And for the county of Prince Edward, because the state split Prince Edward County between two House districts and two Senate districts, it made it particularly challenging to solve the equal population requirements of the federal statutes because we were limited with the way we could move census blocks. And thus, the draft plan before the board this evening represents the committee's unanimous recommendation to change 11 census blocks. Districts 2, 3, and 4 are completely unchanged. Districts 1, 6, 7, and 8 have changes, and District 5 only has changes to one precinct. And the 11 block changes are outlined below, and I believe y'all are familiar with those, and they're also represented on the maps. In addition to the information that's been provided to the board and available to the public through the board's webpage, the county also launched a dedicated redistricting webpage to further facilitate and encourage citizen input and engagement. All information available to the board and the committee is available to the public. Citizen input was sought through the board's two advertised and in-person public hearings and the public input methods outlined on each of the board's agendas, which are by phone, email, and traditional mail. And to date, the county has received one telephone question. There have been zero written citizen comments or in-person comments, and the county has received no alternate redistricting proposals for the board's consideration. And I note that the public comment ended Friday, last Friday, April the 8th, at 4:30 PM. So tonight, the board may now consider action on the proposed redistricting plan and the overall amendments to Chapter 42 Elections of the County Code. Following the board's action tonight, the next step in this process is to publish the final plan to include a plain English description and the text of our ordinance in its entirety, maps of the proposed boundary changes, and notice that the plan will take effect in 30 days. And during this 30-day waiting period, any person who is subject to or affected by the changes in the plan may challenge the plan in the Circuit Court of Prince Edward County. So with that said, there are two recommendations for the board to consider, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if any board members have questions about the actual maps or the districts or the changes that are outlined.
Sir, I'm just curious. You said there was one telephone question. Do you remember what that question was? Just curious.
If I'm not mistaken, it was an individual who lived in what is currently Supervisor Gillum's district, that it was going to be moved into Supervisor Emmert's district. And she just wanted to clarify that that was, based on the maps, that that was in fact the case. It wasn't an objection. It was just a question of making sure she understood.
Thank you. Okay, Board. Registered move recommendation. Well, I would like to make the recommendation. The two given? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been, made a motion and second for approval of the two recommendations. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Odessa? Yes. So moved, so approved, Sarah.
Thank you.
We move to the next step.
Thank you, Lina, for all of your help.
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
The redistricting, you said it doesn't take effect in 30 days. We start early voting May 6th.
Okay.
The state has shut down on Fridays. We're not allowed to use the system because of the redistricting for the congressional changes. So ours will take, mine will only be put in until after the general election.
And in fact, ours will be longer than 30 days from today because we're being safe and because our public notice won't be in the paper until next Wednesday. We're using that as the benchmark of the 30 days so that nobody can question that they weren't aware of the 30 days and we started the clock without them knowing. So it's...
We just want to be aware that nobody's going to be getting the parts and changes until after the general election.
Okay.
And until the state gives them permission, they literally are assigning us numbers by county to do our revision.
The good news is there are only 11 blocks. The good news is there are only 11 blocks.
Well, they have 44 that have congressional. So right now, every Friday, the whole system's shut down, so we can give nothing on the computer at all. We can't even look up so much. So those four, they'll have first priority, and then they'll get to the rest of us.
Okay.
Any questions about anything?
Thank you so much.
I won't be here for the next one.
Sir, while you're standing, the public dance hall ordinance, item 14.
Yes, ma'am. So as part of the comprehensive review of the code of Prince Edward County requested by the board, a draft update of the public dance hall ordinance, which is Chapter 6, Article 4, is attached for the board's consideration and review. The current county ordinance is also attached. Oh, good, and the sheriff is in the room. So county staff working closely with the county attorney and the sheriff researched and reviewed multiple similar ordinances from many jurisdictions across Virginia. The proposed revisions provide for several, I'm going to say, major changes that the board will wish to consider as to whether or not you actually want these changes before we advertise. So probably the most significant is that, as proposed, the permit authority would be moved from the Board of Supervisors to the county administrator. We found that this is the way most jurisdictions did that, that they did not make the administrative permit process rise to the level of the board. It also gets very complicated because the timeline for issuing the permit is 30 days, and it could be very challenging to do the required, it is challenging to do, to conduct the required inspections. And if the board approves the new ordinance to conduct the background checks in order to meet a timeline, to put this on a, I'm going to say, monthly board agenda, because most of the year you don't meet weekly. So we're a little bit spoiled when you go through budget season, and we can add things to agendas, but most of the year you don't do that. So that would be the, I'm going to say, you know, something that the board would wish to consider is, you know, your comfort with moving this to the county administrator. The amendments expand significantly the information that is required from the applicant about the business and his or her partners. The amendments require significant additional information from the applicant or security contractor regarding private security that will be used. The permit fee has been increased in an attempt to cover the cost to the county for staff time and for inspections. So we have proposed or recommend to take that from $100 to $500. But most importantly of all, this ordinance does not apply to dances held for benevolent or charitable purposes or conducted under the auspices of religious, educational, civic, or military organizations. So this would only be private, for-profit entities that would fall under this ordinance because I'm going to say most others would fall under one of those. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the proposed draft permit. We are also working up a revised permit application. And so tonight, what we would ask the board is if you are comfortable with the draft permit, I mean, excuse me, the draft ordinance, is to consider authorizing the advertisement of a public hearing at the May 10th meeting for the proposed amendments to this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Second.
Okay, it's been so moved and seconded, that we consider the advertisement of public hearing? All those in favor, Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa? Yes. So we recommend that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next on the agenda, bond request, Hampton-Sidney College, Mr. Stanley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the Prince Edward County IDA conducted a public hearing on March 25th of 2022 on the application of Hampton-Sidney College requesting the IDA of Prince Edward County to issue up to $35 million of revenue bonds or notes for dorm renovation. No one spoke against the bond issue, and the IDA unanimously approved the inducement resolution agreeing to assist Hampton-Sidney College on the issuance of the bonds and recommending the Board of Supervisors approve the IDA's issuance of the bonds for the renovation of various resident halls on the Hampton-Sidney College campus. A summary of the public hearing is attached in your packet. A summary of the public hearing is attached in your packet. Attachment 1, Section 8 of the IDA Resolution specifically states that if, for any reason, the bonds are not issued, it is understood that all such fees and expenses shall be paid by the borrower and that the authority and the county shall have no responsibility therefore in attachment 2. Attachment 3 is the affidavit publication of public notice for the March 25th, 2022 IDA public hearing. To cover a locality's lack of liability for bonds that an IDA might issue for Hampton-Sidney College or any other not-for-profit, Section 15.24909 of the Industrial Development and Revenue Bond Act of the Code of Virginia provides that any bond issued by an IDA must specifically state that neither the Commonwealth nor any political subdivision thereof, in this case Prince Edward County, nor the IDA shall be obligated to pay the bond except from revenues pledged, therefore, in this case, debt service payments specifically to be made by Hampton-Sidney College. That section likewise provides that the directors of the IDA won't be personally liable on the bond. The language is put into the Code of Virginia to make it clear, the local government and the IDA that assists a 501(c)(3) has no legal responsibility on the debt. Thus, there would be no obligation for either the IDA or the county. The IDA does not receive any notices of payment or any other bond management activities except for the annual administrative fee of the IDA on each anniversary date of bond issuance. Attachment 4 is the fiscal impact statement as it affects Prince Edward County required by state law. As required by Section 147f of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended in Section 15.2496 of the IDA Act, to proceed with the issuance of bonds, the Board of Supervisors must approve a resolution approving the bond, the issuance of the bonds, including attachment 5. So in essence, Prince Edward IDA has assisted Hampton-Sidney in the past. We've also assisted Faram College in the past. It's just another similar bond deal, but this $35 million would help them make improvements to the White House complex, Alphabet's Hall, the carpenter houses and related facilities and appurtenances, all located on the Hampton-Sidney campus. I would also note that their legal counsel is present tonight and been patiently waiting for us to get to this item. And if there are any questions, and Sands Anderson has represented the IDA through this process and has reviewed all documents and provided those to Chelsea for the Board packet.
So really, no financial responsibilities gone before?
That's correct.
Any questions, concerns, or comments?
I move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval?
Madam Chair, just real quick, I just want to confirm, because of the nature of the bond deal, that that approval is to approve the attached resolutions and authorize the county administrator and/or the chairman to sign all necessary documents required for the issuance of the bonds.
Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So it's so moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, business incentive grants, it's Chelsea.
And Madam Chair, at this time, at this time, I'd request that Item 16B be removed from the agenda. That item has been removed by the applicant. That's the Thorpe Trucking request.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Chelsea?
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Industrial Development Authority has received requests for tax incentive payments for Hotel Express LLC and Hotel Wine Oak for 2021. Incentive payments are directly linked to real estate and personal property taxes collected by the county from these entities, and we ask the Board to appropriate these funds previously collected to reimburse the IDA for tax incentive expenditures. And this is in your packets on page 155. And there you'll see that the total requested amount to be reimbursed is $73,170, sorry, This has been going on for a few years now. I believe most of these started in 2016. Some of these incentive grants were five years, and then some were about 10 years. Just to kind of give you a timeframe of how long these incentive grants have been going on and just how long they, I guess, are going to continue. And as you can see, there are two hotels that have requested the reimbursements there for the personal property and the real estate taxes that they've paid. And so I do have a recommendation down at the bottom of that page to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment presented above and appropriate the same funds in the amount of $73,107.82. And I will try to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from anyone? Okay.
I move that we approve the budget amendment, $73,108.82.
Second. Okay, motions are made that we approve the amount of $73,107.82 and appropriate the same funds. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes. Motion made and approved. Thank you, Chelsea. And Chelsea, while you're standing?
I thought I was the next one.
Report economic development and tourism update.
Yes. So on pages 165 through 167 of your packets, you'll find my report, of which I'll provide some highlights. So firstly, I want to say thank you again for your support on the AFID grant application for the expansion of Sandy River Retreat. I'm pleased to announce, as we all know, but, you know, it's never a bad thing to say it again, because it's really good news. The IDA in Prince Edward County were recently awarded $25,000 in grant funding from the Virginia Department of Consumer Services, Agriculture, and Forestry, which that's where the AFID acronym comes from, Industry Development Fund, to support the development of Sandy River Distillery. And so this distillery is an expansion of Sandy River Outdoor Adventures, an agritourism business, and the first distillery to be located in Prince Edward County. The company will create six new jobs and four full-time equivalents and an annual average wage of $30,000. And so that's average, you know, for part-time and full-time jobs that will be created. Additionally, the company will make $25,325 in the new purchase of Virginia-grown corn, berries, and rye, which equates to 45% of all expected purchases. The county recently welcomed the Secretary of Agriculture and Forestry for the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Honorable Matthew J. Lor, who presented the grant award at our announcement event a couple of weeks ago, which turned out to be a really nice event. Additionally, I'd just like to mention that I've been meeting with VEDP pretty regularly. I did have the opportunity to present an update on current projects and economic development priorities to the VEDP managing directors and the VEDP business investment manager. And we also participated in another VEDP site visit, like saying VEDP too many times, site visit to the hit park. Also, we recently completed work with the IDA to get all of the IDA-owned lots appraised to better market them to prospects and potential developers. And I will try to answer any questions that you may have.
Chelsea, thank you for your job. Well done.
Thank you.
That's a thorough job when you don't get any questions asked.
Next, we have finance and the HR report. Cheryl. Good evening.
I have two items on the agenda, and then I have something I'd like to say about jobs in Prince Edward County. We currently have two job openings. One is in the Commissioner of Revenue's office, and the other one is the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So if you have people that are interested in jobs in the county, just ask them to go to our website. That's the first item I have that's not on the agenda. Then the second one is a request from the school board to appropriate $128,499 for state and federal reimbursement grants. And so they're asking you to approve those, the appropriation. And there's attachments in there for what they got the grants for.
I move we approve the appropriation.
I second that.
Motion has been made for approval. And second, appropriations to Prince Edward County Public Schools. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes.
And then our second, thank you. The second item is for ATL funding to the different fire departments in the county. And so we received $61,328 from the ATL funds, and we'd like those distributed equally among the four departments at $15,332.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, those funds appropriated. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Me and I'm on the Don Heights Fire Department, I should abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. Motion made and moved.
Appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your report, Cheryl.
Madam Chair, a quick question, because I got a phone call while we're on ATL.
Yes.
I guess that's very similar to what the four-for-life is for rescue squad, kind of. From what I understand, that Dave and I have gotten the four-for-life.
I know Trey was working with Deanna. We've gotten behind, it's my understanding, a couple of years, and I think...
Couple of years.
Trey's been working with Deanna, but I don't know the status. He's out of town at training, but I know it's...
I just got in a phone call, and it's one to know and know it. I said, I'll bring it to the Board.
Thank you, Dave.
So be it.
We'll get you a report the next board read.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Okay, next, we'll have our county attorney's report. Ms. Cherry, I think, Wilson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see from the Board, from the Board packet, we've been working on ordinances. Worked on the zoning, worked on, I mean, I'm sorry, worked on the redistricting. We've worked on the dance hall. Anyway, slowly but surely, we're going to attack each one of the ordinances and hopefully get us all up to speed. Don't have anything, luckily, no lawsuits that I'm aware of at this moment. I am excited. I am going to Harrisonburg next week for a conference with the local government attorneys. It's a very active listserv. Daily, there's discussions, and a lot of times, they're an excellent resource. So I'm looking forward to meeting faces and putting names in faces with those folks that have reached out and helped us over the time. I reach out on a regular basis if we're getting ready to do an ordinance or have some issue to come up. So I'm looking forward to going to that for two days next week. So anyone have any questions, concerns?
Cheryl, we think and appreciate your work on the new ordinance and ordinances. Very important, much needed.
Thank you, thank you. We've got a good team working on them.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanders, county minister of State's report.
Yes, ma'am, I've got a few items to report on, and I got a couple items I would like to get some direction from the Board on. First, over the past week, the Board, county staff, have heard from a number of county residents with concerns of the erection of a large flagpole at the East Farmville 460 off-ramp on the East Third Street. The flagpole was erected by the Virginia flaggers on private property. Since the flag's installation, county staff have received calls and emails over how the flagpole was permitted to be erected on the, it's such a height and size. In review of the various county codes and ordinances that govern such a land use with our legal counsel, the current 60-foot flagpole has been determined to be in violation of the county zoning ordinance regulations as both an unauthorized accessory use in the C1 Commercial District and a structure exceeding the allowable height limitation. We've issued a notice of violation to the property owner and given them 30 days to bring the property into conformance with the ordinance, including a removal of the flagpole. The Appomattox River debris on April 3rd to April 8th, the Friends of the Appomattox River and the U.S. Navy Demolitions Unit from Yorktown cleared debris in the Appomattox, and they were very complimentary on our emergency services team and support they provided. Prince Edward County landfill, Labella, our new landfill engineer, performed an inspection two weeks ago of the facility and sent a list of recommendations for staff to work on to address, and I definitely think we're getting our house in order. We also met with our landfill staff to address some operational and personnel issues and concerns. We feel comfortable that these issues have been adequately addressed. At the last board meeting, the issue about the roundabout at Kingsville came up and about the coordination with the opening of schools and the opening of Hampton-Sidney, closing and opening of Hampton-Sidney for this year and next year's school year. And Scott Frederick has indicated that he thought that the contractor would be able to postpone their work one week to allow for Prince Edward County Public Schools to be completed with the school year before starting work. VDOT SmartScale, Melody Foster's confirmed that CRC has submitted SmartScale applications for both Manor House Drive Turn Lane and the Route 665-692 intersection improvements. The final applications are due on August 1st. Sandy River Reservoir, we received a draft memorandum of understanding, or MOU, from the Virginia Department of General Services for the state facilities in Nottaway. We're currently reviewing that with our legal counsel on the water project from Aqua Law. The MOU provides a level of commitment from the state, which will hopefully let us move forward with the interim agreement with Prince Edward County Infrastructure LLC for the Sandy River Project. The VRA 2017b bonds, county staff closed out that bond account, and we had $33,635.59 that is to be transferred back to the county, and we're going to ask that Board put that into our special projects capital improvement plan account. At its board meeting on February 22nd, the Board of Supervisors approved a three-month dance hall permit for new fevers. The approval was subject to the owner addressing four life safety issues with the building. Building official Philip Moore accompanied the state Fire Marshal's Office on inspection of the facility on April 6th. The four outstanding items were addressed, and on April 7th, I reissued the dance hall permit, and its current expiration date is scheduled for May 22nd. Lastly, again, the General Assembly still doesn't have a budget. I've been told as of last week, they hoped in two weeks, which will be next week. I have had discussions with the school superintendent and come up with a revised budget schedule. I think the... Dr. Johnson and I, I think, have both agreed, the new schedule, if the state doesn't have a budget, we're going to have to move forward. They have got to have a budget to be able to issue contracts. We already will be a month behind, but the new schedule, basically, our next budget work session won't be till the 26th, and that's where Dr. Johnson will present a budget or a couple options of budget. If we don't have a state, she'll make a couple estimates of what the anticipated state revenue will be. We'll have another work session on May 3rd to kind of finalize numbers. We'll authorize it on May 10th. The ad would be placed in the May 18th newspaper with the public hearing on 31st of May, a work session to adopt the budget on June 7 and approve the appropriation resolution on June 14. So it's a tight schedule, and we can't afford any more slip-ups. And I just hope the state is able to do their job and deliver a budget to us. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would ask Madam Chair if I could get the Board to approve the revised schedule. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would ask, Madam Chair, if I could get the board to approve the revised schedule.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for to approve the revised schedule. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes.
Next two items, I need basic concurrence from the board to be able to move forward. The first, Prince Edward, we're looking at some options for applying for funding for the Sandy River project. There's a lot of federal money floating around with either ARPA funds or just through the state office of drinking water, but the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water has funds available to help develop the Sandy River reservoir as a backup water source for the town of Farmville, as a water source that would serve eastern portions of Prince Edward, plus the town of Burkeville, the three state facilities, including the Nottaway Correctional Center, the Piedmont Geriatric Hospital, and the Virginia Center for Behavioral Rehabilitation. The project would include facilities and infrastructure for water treatment and distribution. Potentially, we could apply for up to a million dollars from the three different sources, the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and ARPA funds. I'm just asking for permission from the board to apply. There's no commitment at this point in time, but if you don't ask, you're not gonna get any money. Each. Whatever we can get in line for, I wanna get in line if there's a handouts going.
Absolutely.
So do we need a motion or do we just approve it?
A motion and a second, and a vote would be.
So moved.
So moved in second. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim? Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, and yes, I approve.
The last thing that I have, Sean Rosier, Sean works with Sharon Harrop at STEPS. STEPS is looking to try to cobble together a, it's a tiny home, emergency shelter homeless community based in Farmville that would serve the region. And they're looking at a site, I believe, off of West Third Street in town on public water and sewer. But they've got an application they're gonna submit to Congressman Abigail Spanberger's office for some federal funding. Would not require any local match, but they need a letter of support from Prince Edward County. So I just want concurrence from the board, I don't need a motion, but just concurrence that y'all are okay with me writing a letter of support.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's a wonderful thing.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be addressed on the addendum packet?
I would, I'd like to get a vote and a clarification as far as this iPad goes. I would like to be involved free of charge, of course, but in some of the projects I'm working on, and that has particularly to do with the school situation and the ramp off of 460. So I don't feel comfortable making the motion, but I'd like to get a clarification on that.
I've made the motion that you be able to keep it and carry it with you because you're gonna save us some money in the long run by the knowledge that you already have and the projects that you're working on. So I'd make that motion.
I second that. But also, I don't think, I think you mentioned something about some shelving or something. You mentioned something to Doug like a swap.
So we've got.
See, I don't want us to get into that. Either we give it to him or we don't.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we just give it to him.
I think we just give it to him.
What I have given to the county has nothing to do with this, in other words.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we ain't mixing, people ain't, we ain't trading, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm fine with what Jim had, I second that motion.
Okay, it's been motioned in second that Jim gets to keep his iPad?
Yes.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
And Jim, that gets.
I'm gonna have to stand.
Right.
Yes.
Bobby? Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So it's so moved, you can keep that device.
No, do nothing illegal with that.
So, Jim, just, we can talk, we've got, you know, right now, it's tied to a phone number. At some point, we can get that transferred to you if you wanna keep it, or we can figure something else out if you just wanna use it off of Wi-Fi. But we can help you through that process. Okay. Okay.
Any other items?
We've got on your table pack, you've got a couple items. The first, and this is item 25, food and beverage tax. Let me get to my cover sheet here real quick.
Page 205.
205, yes, ma'am. So during the 2020 General Assembly session, HP 785 and Senate Bill 588 were passed with the following provisions. All counties were authorized to levy a tax on emissions at a rate not to exceed 10% with the exception of counties in the historic triangle where an additional state sales tax and the use tax was imposed. Two, all counties were authorized to levy a transit occupancy tax exceeding 2%. Revenue derived from rates greater than 2 would be spent either for purposes previously authorized for rates between 2 and 5 for tourism promotion. And revenue rates greater than 5 would be used for general purposes. Three, all counties were authorized to impose cigarette tax at a rate not to exceed forty cents per pack. And then, lastly, all counties were authorized to impose a meals tax at a rate not to exceed 6% and eliminates the referendum requirement. A locality which a meals tax referendum failed prior to July 1, 2020 would have to wait six years after the day of the failed referendum to oppose the tax. During the FY 2021 budget process, the board asked staff to look at alternative funding sources. Since that time, the county has instituted the transient occupancy tax at 7% and has been involved with the Regional Commission on discussions on the regional cigarette tax. As you know, Delegate Edmunds carried a bill in 22 General Assembly session to have Prince Edward County added to the list of qualified localities that would have allowed us to collect up to 1% additional sales tax revenue. And that was late on the table, and I assume we'll ask him again to try again next year. Attached is a draft ordinance to enact a county food and beverage tax at a rate of 6%. The county would only collect tax outside of town limits. With the largest restaurant, the Fish and Pick, looking to move into town limits in the next month or so, we do not anticipate collecting a large amount of revenue. Most of it will be generated from prepared food at the various mom-and-pop convenience stores located throughout the county. None of the surrounding counties currently has a meals tax. We looked at some counties similarly situated, including Amherst, Inwoodie, Page, Middlesex. As you can see, it's a varying amount of tax. But what we've proposed is that everything collected would be dedicated towards school capital improvements. You know, with the stalling of the state sales tax, we gotta figure out a way to pay for the elementary school. This won't do it all, but this will be another piece of that, another component. I know that we're gonna impact the Office of the Commissioner of Revenue. I've supported and got in the budget an additional position in there. Between the lodging tax and meals tax, there's additional workload there that they're gonna have to take up. I would, we will have to pick a date forward where this becomes effective. Even if we have a public hearing next month, if we won't ask for it to be effective the next day, I'll have to sit down and talk to the commissioner about that. But we've got to, we've gotta get something on the books and start moving in that right direction. I think the community will support it if it's going for a specific purpose, if it's just not going to the bottom line, but going to help a need in our community. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but all we're looking for at this time is to authorize for a public hearing on the proposed meals tax ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made to authorize advertising a public hearing for the May 10th meeting. And second, Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Odessa, yes. So, so moved.
The next item, item 26, regards to Sandy River Reservoir Water Sampling and Treatability Study. In April of 2020, the board approved an additional engagement for professional engineering services from the Timmons Group to assist the county with the submission of an application, DQ, for the renewal of the county's intake permit for Sandy River. That was submitted last September. As you know, when we talked about, we're continuing to have discussions with the Department of General Services on a MOU for us to provide water. We're looking at about a three-year process from start to finish as far as being able to build a facility, install lines, and provide water. That's based on what the state needs, what they've advertised as far as deliverability. The need for the testing has to do with, they call it, the kind of the turnover in the water, where you go from a cold water to the warm water, there's sediment in the bottom of the reservoir, and they have to look at turbidity and the water, what constitutes the water as far as the organics, and look at the treatment process that will need to be put in place. This study was originally, I think, done back the last time we went through the process, and it's gotta do the timeframe, it's gotta be done again. And I'm talking with Joe Hines and Timmons, and I believe Joe's on the call tonight if there are any questions, but we wanna make sure, we don't, we wanna spend as little as possible until we have that agreement with the state. Right now, they've estimated that at about $120,000 to get us through the next three to four months and do the work that's needed. So that's why we're bringing it to tonight, but that'll at least keep the process moving. Joe, are you on the line, do you have anything else to offer? He's not on the line, okay.
What did you say the cost was gonna be?
The cost of this proposal, I believe, is 120,000. We have, in our current budget, we had 185,000 for engineering. We haven't spent anywhere near all of that, and we've got that in the proposed budget for next year. So we've got money budgeted to include.
Okay, so we need a motion for that?
Second.
The motion has been made in second for the approval of the proposal from the Timmons Group for water sampling program and treatability study. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David? Odessa, yes. Motion made and approved.
And the next item, Madam Chair, is to go into closed session, and there is a motion on page 231.
I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed session, one, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation, where such consultation and briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the litigating posture of the county pursuant to the exemption provided for in Section 2.2, 3711A7 of the Code of Virginia, and for consultation with legal counsel regarding specifically matters regarding, related to the county's zoning ordinance and requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to the exemption provided for in Section 2.2, 3711A8 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Okay, Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim? Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. We are now in closed session. Yes. Sheriff, yeah, I'm gonna take a look.
I move the board supervisor certified to the best of each members knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa? Yes. So moved.
Was there anything else Sarah that we need to do as far as coming out? We just did the certification.
We're backwards.
Be back. We should have done the motion first.
We should have done what?
That's all right.
She made the motion to go back into open session.
Right.
Yes. Okay. So what do we do now?
You want to make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we're, that we go into open session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded we go into open session. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
We need a second for that. It was seconded, it was seconded.
David did.
Okay, so moved. Okay, is that it?
We're in open session now.
I'm gonna move that we adopt to attach emergency ordinance to provide a maximum size for flags and to amend the height requirement for flag pole to the limit of the height to twenty feet and allow for taller flag poles in, in the A1, A2, C1, I1, and CR zoning districts upon the issuance of a special use permit and to refer to the, and refer, and to refer the amendment to the planning commission for formal consideration.
I second that.
Okay, it's been motion and seconded that all the guidelines would be enforced. Motion and second. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby? Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa? Yes.
And again ma'am, Chair will look at trying to coordinate the joint public hearing with the client commission. Their next meeting is I believe May seventeen, which is the third Tuesday if I correct. No, no, not next month. The May next, we had to advertise, so next, next meeting May, yeah. We'll have this on their agenda authorized, I'll confirm that.
Okay. Is that it?
I make the motion re- recess.
Recession.
Recession to the twenty-sixth.
Everybody received an invitation to the first responder picnic?
Yes.
So if you can let me know if you plan to attend so that I can ask you to, um, present a volunteer rescue squad.
We got some names who need to carry.
Oh, okay, perfect. And will you fetch the, um, properties committee?
So, we originally were looking at meeting with LaBella on the twenty-sixth, but we've got five thirty budget meetings. The question, Mr. Chair, the properties committee is, what's better for you, like a three thirty on the twenty-sixth or meet on a separate night on the twenty-eighth?
What day is the twenty-sixth?
Tuesday.
What's going on? Have we had our works at this?
That's our landfill engineer and we're gonna have him come in and, I'm gonna say, go in depth on some things with the properties committee and talk about his master plan and.
Next though.
We're working on a business model and we want to bring it through the property before we bring it through the board.
We can do it later, but on the twenty-eighth.
No, let's, let's, let's do it all at once. It's killing me.
Do it all at once, okay.
It's killing me.
How long is that, um, meeting gonna be with the school board on the twenty-sixth?
I would say noon more than probably an hour and a half or so.
That's also my crossbones.
What time is that when you start?
Seven.
We'll have you out by then. We start at five thirty.
Okay.
Should we gonna do this landfill thing?
At three thirty.
Probably at three thirty.
Three thirty.
From three, from three thirty to eight you here Jerry, that's all it is too.
They gonna take two hours?
For the.
We got another meeting right after that.
Yeah, another to school.
It'll take hour and a half.
Yes, sir. Well, yeah, because you'll have to leave here by five to get to the schools by five thirty.
So the school, it's meet, it's out there?
At the middle school, that would've got it.
Since we have a meeting here at seven after that, can we entice them to come here?
We, we don't have a meeting here at seven. It'll just be the five thirty.
Five thirty.
I'm the one that has the seven o'clock.
She's got seven.
Right.
And this is the twenty-sixth of twenty-eight?
Six.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, you may have to go back and scratch through some old budget dates and look at the new.
Twenty-sixth at three thirty, correct?
He gave us a meeting today.
Yeah, I better break.
Yeah, me too. Somebody called me, asking me where I am.
Probably a public hearing or something for the public.
Absolutely.
That's all changed now.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to recess April twenty-sixth. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa? Yes.
Can you get this back though?
We can't rescind that.